I've called it order the planning commission regular meeting July twentieth, two thousand and twenty three. If I can ask the clerk to take roll call, please.
Anderson.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Broker.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Lucette.
Here.
And me.
Here. Very good. Does everyone have an opportunity to review the agenda that's in the packet? Is there any comments or changes? If not, do you have a motion to approve?
The move.
A move and a second?
Second.
It was by. Not second by broker. All those in favor?
Yes.
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 Reposed, no agenda approved. Everyone have an opportunity to read through the minutes from our June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty three meeting.
I would make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty three.
Second.
Motion by Gardner, second by Anderson. All those in favor?
Yes.
By opposed. Very good. Minutes are approved, which then moves us to our first public comment. A section of the evening. This public comment is geared towards anything that's on the agenda. If you would like to speak, address anything that's on the agenda itself. Please come up to the microphone, or if you're online, raise your hand. And if you are going to speak, please give us your name, your address, and then limit comments to three minutes. In the room, I don't believe we have any online anyone. Don't believe so, so that will close the public comment section. Moving on then to agenda item five, old business. The old business is short term rental task force verbal update. Holly, do you want to go first? Would you like?
Well, Ryan, do you want to go first?
You want to? Oh, I'm just Madam Chair.
I I did remember that we've had two meetings since the last planning. Um, so yes, we have. We had a meeting on July sixth. That focused a lot down. McKenna pulled together a lot of data for us to review, um, you know, home value trends, S T R trends. Um, to just kind of ground us in where things are. We've been looking at maps of where S D Rs fall within the city. Um, we also spent a chunk of the the sixth meeting talking about the survey that just went out. Um, got feedback from all of the task force members on what they wanted included. Um, and then talked about what the town hall might look like and, um, so began talking about that. Um, as you all know, the town hall, the survey's gone out and it's on the website. Um, town hall is Tuesday, uh, at the high school. Uh, Ryan worked on a postcard that should be arriving any day now for folks, um, either this weekend or early next week. Get a letter in the commercial record, um, today. So, um, you know, I think we're pretty, pretty well geared up for that. Today's meeting talked about, um, we went over some more data. We're really trying to get our heads wrapped around how, um, how many parcels, dwelling units and S T Rs are in each of the zones. Um, so McKenna did a great job of of pulling together different maps and a, um, a chart. That, um, kind of we can break down by zone. So we talked, um, that was a good discussion. I feel like we're learning more. They also um, provided some additional data on sort of how the the gap between what you can rent a short term rental for versus, um, what you. Um, Ryan, do you remember what that gap was? It was how much it costs, how much you can get for a short term rental versus not.
Yep. So looking at what, you know, the cost would be to purchase the property and what you're paying in taxes and other estimated expenses that would cost to operate a short term rental, taking feedback from the short term rental, um, kind of agents that were present, how many days you could actually expect at at low rates, it kind of ran some analysis to see. Are we getting to a point where the homes are just more expensive?
Right.
And and it's kind of becoming, you know, more difficult to actually, you know, make your money on it and make it if you're doing it, going to do it just for that purpose.
Right. In the last couple of years, it's harder to make make money on short term rentals, especially people who have just bought. Um, we also spent some time talking about what, um, what objectives we would recommend to planning and the city council to sort of guide the discussion around any changes that we would consider to short term rentals. Um, and so we'll have that to have that up or feedback at the town hall. People can weigh in on that. Um, and, uh, that was most of it. Talked a little bit about the town hall. It was actually a short meeting. Um, we were done.
Right there.
Yeah, so, um, but I feel like we're going on. I mean, there's definitely some, um, adjuvant people wanting to, you know, it's like, okay, let's get this done. Um, I do think we're we're pretty much done with the data gathering and analysis other than the survey and town hall. Um, which I know I consider more of that in the engagement. So by early August, a survey will close August seventh. So, you know, by mid-August, we should really have a good sense of all of the inputs and can start framing some of the recommendations. So I think, anything to add?
Well done, Madam Chair. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Planning Director.
What time is the town hall on Tuesday?
It's at six thirty and there's two segments of it. The first forty-five minutes will be, um, it's kind of an open house like, so we'll have some discussion boards. Um, and we'll have the task force members and some McKenna folks staffing that and just sort of, you know, talking to people informally. And we'll move into the auditorium, um, and have time for public comment. So that will be a formal public comment period under the Open Meeting Act.
Thank you. And the most important question, are first, are refreshments being provided?
I don't think we're providing refreshments.
Should we consider it? I know it's a short term real question, but.
Oh.
Do we have?
My suggestion would be yes.
Mine too. Six thirty, people get cranky if they're hungry and that's dinnertime.
Doesn't have to be.
Yeah, I I.
I mean, could it just be like? Water sodas, cookies or?
Some bags or something.
Yeah.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, I can trickle back. We'll we'll discuss that. Yeah.
I'll bake some cookies.
What else do you have to do?
Kidding.
But in that regard, I just chair and then being part of the short term rental task force, I do want to compliment Chair over here on not only the effort that you're putting in, you know, and organize the meetings, but like a letter to the editor that was in today's paper. Once again, you know, we try to get Scott Sullivan to try to come and, you know, cover the short term, which we haven't had any great success, as I mentioned one article earlier. And so this is a nice way that you're able to kind of keep the community abreast of what we're doing, the staff.
Yeah.
By far, because all of the surveys we've got going out between waterfront and short term and making copies of paper and Q R codes and answering phones. So thanks, you know, to the staff and of course Ryan also and all anyone who's helping us with it. It's.
Yes, I mean, Ryan has done an amazing job. I mean, he's working way harder on this than I am, and both of the clerks have done, um, phenomenal work, so.
Big team.
We love each other.
Big team.
Yeah.
Definitely a team.
Yep.
Well, that will close out.
This is me just adding it to my personal calendar, so I'm not.
That will close out then our old business. Moving on then to new business. We have two items on the agenda. The first item on the agenda is a site plan review for one forty-nine Griffin. Said your packet, but I will ask my director Cummins if he would just kind of give us an update on the applicant. And then we'll ask for the applicant to speak.
Yeah, certainly, Mr. Chair. Um, Matthew Bush of one forty-nine Griffith Street has applied for, um, a site plan approval, uh, to kind of make a few modifications onsite. Um, most of those structures onsite are already existing. Uh, the the use of the property historically has been a a restaurant, um, including uh, outdoor dining in the the rear yard area. Uh, and then there's also a, uh, upper level dwelling on the property as well. So um, they've been through the historic district commission for various work, including windows and, um, a variety of this work and a variety of other, uh, pieces. They've been for the historic district commission a couple of times, but there's a few items that also needed, um, zoning approval. Which includes, uh, their plans to, um, demolish an existing, um, kind of refrigerator space and then kind of move that on the site. Um, to a new location, which kind of triggered the the site plan review that was required, um, because it's a, uh, reconfiguration of buildings on onsite. Uh, they also have plans to, um, redo some fencing, um, and then replace some, uh, decks, uh, to the rear. Uh, Mr. Jurassic had flagged a few things for you in your your meeting packet, including, um, whether or not the fence would be a a foot back from the sidewalk. Um, wanting a little bit more detail on kind of, uh, uh, that new deck space, uh, on the property. Uh, and then maybe, uh, wanting a little bit more detail about the, uh, outdoor, uh, restaurant space. My my previous conversations with the applicants have indicated that they plan on using the outdoor space in the same way that the that the restaurant before them did. But, um, Chris is here on behalf of the applicant tonight, and I'm sure can kind of walk you through the details if you'd like. Yeah.
And then Ryan, this was a new.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, thank you for noting that. Yeah, yep. So the the applicants, uh, uh, saw that the feedback from the staff report um, and and, uh, did, uh, submit kind of a revised plan of the planning commission to view this evening. It's on your screen and in front of you, um, which kind of touches on some of those items.
Right. Is before we have them speak. So if what I'm seeing is it shows the one point two, one foot, two inches setback for the for the defense.
Defense, yep.
And then it is showing with the deck, a couple of things that you just highlighted. Okay.
Correct. Yep.
Makes it easy for you then, Chris. Would you like to come up?
I can. I don't know. Chris Nelson from Schley Nelson Architects, um, and I I think, uh, Ryan covered the the gist of it. I mean, you see it, see it on the screen here. Pretty straightforward, uh, existing restaurant. We just want to, um, rehab it essentially. Um, the owner of this facility, uh, Allison Maxwell and her husband Matt Bush, they've got two other restaurants that they've done the same kind of thing to, one in Plainwell and one down in Matteawan. Um, and this is, I mean, really the the gist of it is, uh, there's a giant two-story walk-in freezer cooler in the backyard. That's all dilapidated. They want to get that out of there and put in a new um, single story, uh, uh, walk-in cooler and essentially tie it into where the garage is at right now. Use that, uh, that garage space is going to become kind of kitchen prep area. So that makes sense to have that attached there. And then they just wanted to screen it off from the street so that everybody didn't have to look at the side of the cooler. Um, and just extend the existing fence that's there now and and apply a a gate to that as well. As far as the new deck in the back goes, that that's an existing deck that was, uh, rotting and falling apart. So well, essentially a one for one replacement of that deck. Um, and then the outdoor, uh, restaurant area is exactly that. They've got, there's an existing sort of little tiki bar out there. Um, it's kind of a makeshift thing that that they'll probably, uh, either rehab or replace with the same same thing. Um, and then seating outside will be the same as it was before. Um, I've mentioned this to, um, David Jurassic. Uh, one of the things that we have to do is is our full set of drawings for the rehab of the building, uh, is an occupancy count. And it was pointed out to me, I was trying to do the run the calculations for how many people are are in this building inside and outside. And we could really have a lot more people there than what they want to have there. So we're limiting that because they just can't run that many people through this small kitchen. So, um, when we, when we submit for the permit, it'll it'll have that, those calculations and everything on it, but that's limited on the inside and outside for the count. Um, a couple of things, uh, as Ryan mentioned, we came to the historic commission as well, um, twice because we changed the fence in the front yard after the fact. So we kind of came back a second time to get that approved. You can kind of see the little picture in the bottom of the sort of nice little decorative fence that's going to go there. And then the privacy fence in the back, just extending that existing fence. So I'm here to answer any questions that you might have and anything that I can do to help that along.
Chris, what are they going to call the restaurant?
What are they going to call it? I'm not a hundred percent sure. Um, their other restaurants are, um, Bird Dog in Matteawan and Dog in the Bank in Plainwell. So um, I don't.
Somebody asked me if I knew, so I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know as if they've they've put anything out on that yet. I haven't heard officially, so.
Something dog.
That would be my guess.
Um, right, Ryan, can you just remind us the reason, you know, since this is already an approved business, the reason it came back in front of the planning commission is because of the movement of the freezer?
Correct. So reconfiguration of buildings onsite requires, it wouldn't qualify for a minor amendment to a site plans qualified as a major, which required it to come back to the planning commission. I know you would say, okay, a freezer, how is that a building? But when you look at the definition of a building, it includes something that has walls with a cup, you know, roof or a cover on it, which really meets that definition.
Right. Yeah, I was just asking for the clarification because again, we're not really debating or looking at like what a traditional site plan, like if it's a new, you know, type of a venue as far as occupancies and seating and permits.
Yeah, they were expanding, yeah, like seating areas in the back or things like that, then certainly there would be some additional triggers, but.
Any questions for?
Yeah, but yeah. Oh, thanks, Mr. Man. Thank you for being here this evening. Um, this used to be the B Finch House, so that's how I know it. I've been around here long enough that it's a private residence.
Yep.
Uh, for many years. Her name was B Finch. So that's how I always remember it. And it's 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 amazing how far it's progressed since. And so but I'm very pleased about this. I think this is a great change. Sagatuck Fish Camp, which was the previous, um, proprietor didn't make too much of it. Uh, I've been down at the parking lot working for the school a couple of times this year. People walk by and say, hey, what happened to the fish camp? And so there's a lot of curiosity about what's going to happen there. So I'm really, um, uh, I don't remember her name, but she came to one of the council meetings, so I'll introduce her to Allison.
Yep.
Uh, so she seems very earnest and I'm excited to see what they come up with here. I think this is a great idea. Um, a couple of questions I have from the site plan. Uh, one is do they scoped out any lighting? Is there plans to change exterior lighting?
No, no changes in the exterior lighting.
Okay, because what I've seen some from some of the commercial developments and private developments in town, lighting seems to be intense at some properties. Um, and I actually will have counsel comment about one or commissioner comment towards the end of the meeting, but I just want to make sure that, you know, this is not going to be disruptive to the neighborhood from the lighting standpoint. Because we've got a bed and breakfast on either side, private residences down Mason Street, get an empty parking lot across the street. So so make sure that's respected. Uh, also, is there going to be any, uh, drainage concerns with any of the construction that's going on? Didn't see a drainage plan on here. Has that been discussed?
Drainage for the during the during construction?
Well, drainage after, when it's actually in operations, if there's going to be any runoff or I didn't see any, didn't see anything on the plan.
Yeah, we we really haven't addressed any additional drainage because, uh, the the cooler that's there and the cooler that is going to replace it are essentially the same footprint. But the new cooler is sitting over the top of the existing driveway, so we're not changing it because it's already hard surface. So there's really no increase in previous surfaces on the site. Right. It's highlighted in.
Both the lighting and that.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. The last one is, uh, sound. Um, when you mentioned that the the new owners plan to use the back area as previous owners did, um, there were several neighbor complaints about loudness. Uh, they had live bands back there and, uh, again, working in the parking lots, it 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 got pretty loud. I mean, it was, and not to say that the new owners are going to intend to do the same type of thing, but I think that has to be respected too. I don't know if there's anything from planning commission we can do to ensure as part of the use that that's not going to affect the neighbors. Um, you know, we've just, it just, I've had comments made to me about the past ownership. And, um, just want to make sure that we're respective of that because it's in a, it's in a residential neighborhood.
Oh, sure. Yeah. Well, I know, I mean, no one has ever talked about putting any kind of a stage or anything like that for live music out back. Um, and it's been the intent to do basically have outdoor seating out there. Um, so nothing that I'm aware of is going to happen. And and I guess me being unaware of if they had live music previously, you know, my my thought was from having seen it before, before we kind of started on the project, that it was just seating out there. So I guess I didn't realize that they had live bands or anything like that.
They did, like six-piece bands and it was loud.
Okay, okay. Well, I will take that back to them and let them know that that is a concern. I I will say that in their other other facilities, their other two restaurants, they don't have anything like that. They do have, uh, I don't know if anybody's ever been to either of their places. The one in Plainwell is more more comparable to this in that we, they they bought a building and then rehabbed it. And then on that site, they had some outdoor space that was sort of fenced in, kind of like the the decorative fence, and that's right on the street also. So there's nothing, their their restaurant is is kind of their focus.
Yeah, great. I'm looking forward to it. Excited about it.
It's cool. Any other questions or comments? Very good. I thank you. And again, like Fisher Gardner said, I think it's actually a nice improvement to me from being back there before, seeing the refrigerator move over and kind of being right next to it.
Yeah.
Old driveway makes a lot of sense.
I think it'll it'll clean up nicely.
It will. It will. Is there any comments or discussion amongst the commissioners before we would move it to a vote?
I just had one question. It's probably for Ryan, which is, um, I I just, I'm assuming now that we know the setback of the fence, that there's no variances or anything needed for the site plan?
Correct. Yeah. And in fact, actually, um, yeah, correct.
And the only thing that would be subject to currently is, has the fire department done their review?
So they've, I believe submitted their plans to the fire department and they were, last I heard, they were in the queue for review was the last thing email I saw on it, unless you've received an update from them. Okay. Yeah. Yep. So certainly probably a condition, um.
With anyone.
This is that that that's the only condition, correct?
Correct. I would believe that would be then. So if we have a motion, would anyone like to make a motion for this site plan for one forty-nine Griffith?
Yeah, I will move to approve the site plan for one forty-nine Griffith. Uh, on the condition that it receives, uh, fire department approval.
Second. Okay. All those in favor say hi.
Hi.
Yes. Oh, wait, no, this will be a roll call. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. My mistake.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Broker.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Lucette.
Yes.
And me.
Yes. Nice work. Chris has passed.
Very well. Thanks.
Thank you for being here.
Second item on the agenda for new business was the waterfront development zoning ordinance review. The initial assessment report, which was included in our kits, uh, gave us quite a bit of detail as to where we are currently along the waterfront. Um, Ryan, would you like to kind of kick off or would you want?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Dave Jurassic with Horizon Planning has been, uh, hard at work, kind of assessing, uh, your current, um, regulations. He's prepared for you an initial assessment report that was in your packet. And it's all right with you, Mr. Chair. I'll turn it over to him to kind of present, uh, his findings and then kind of lead a discussion with you.
Perfect. All right. David, go ahead then, please.
Uh, yes, good evening, everyone. Um, I, as Ryan had mentioned, uh, this is the, um, really the the first of of two reports, uh, first half of the the assessment. Um, this is really the the background, the basis for the the recommendations, uh, that will be coming out, uh, for next month's meeting. Uh, so, uh, as you know, from the report, this is a really a character assessment of, uh, both of these study areas on each side of the river. Uh, kind of a overarching redevelopment assessment about how much land might be available, uh, in in suitable for redevelopments or development, uh, a review of the master plan and a review of the the zoning ordinance regulations, uh, that apply to the the underlying zoning districts. Uh, so, uh, we can walk through that report a bit. And I also wanted to report on the, uh, the survey. Uh, the visual preference survey is is online and that both surveys will be available for another eleven days. Uh, we have a hundred and seventy-nine participants so far, uh, with the visual preference survey and, uh, two hundred and eight, uh, for the general waterfront regulation survey. So uh, pretty good participation already. Um, I, you know, I do check on the results from time to time. I haven't, uh, prepared a certain summary of that, but um, for the visual preference, uh, so far, most of the the one and two-story buildings of the more, uh, traditional design pitched roofs. Uh, so a lot of the the more modern, uh, looking buildings from the visual preference survey, uh, were were not preferred for either side of the river. And, uh, those that are one to two, two and a half stories, uh, with pitch roofs with more traditional design, those have been the ones, really the only ones, uh, that have been preferred by, uh, the, uh, the responding, uh, participants. Um, concerning the 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 general study or the general survey, uh, same thing with with the, uh, the the stories of building stories, uh, most, uh, really the vast majority of folks responded uh, buildings, two and a half stories or lesser. Um, and again, a lot of priorities of folks were to to, um, look into, uh, access to the to the waterfront, um, walkability of the waterfront, open space, and really kind of, uh, controlling the the overall bulk and scale of buildings. So uh, really, it it's, uh, the survey results have really reinforced a lot of what, uh, we assumed going into the project and they really reinforced, uh, you know, the conversations of the city council and the planning commission. So, um, there's also that there were a number of opportunities for for open-ended responses. Uh, so that there have been a lot of, uh, thoughtful comments, uh, put into the survey questions as well. So I'm looking forward to putting that into a summary for you to review, um, over the next, uh, in two weeks or so when when the surveys close. Um, also, uh, as discussed at our last meeting, uh, we we did put together, um, three boards, uh, that were available for your public events. And, um, I wanted to hear back from 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 those, uh, that who are at those events. Um, if I know, uh, not sure if they were all held based on weather and everything, but I'm just curious to see if there was a a positive, uh, reaction to the boards, the recommendations or or the project in general. Uh, so, uh, whoever was able to to, uh, staff those stations, I'd love to hear, uh, your input on those.
Um, so. Share that with you, David.
Okay, okay. Uh, would you like to do that now?
Let me do it now? Sure. I think, um, we've had an opportunity to have the boards out three or three or four times total so far. You know, the participation has been somewhat mixed between residents, um, who own property in Sagatuck. We broke it down into three categories. If you are a resident who's a voter in Sagatuck, you mark your stuff in blue, you know, as your opinions as well as your dots. If you live here, but you're, you know, you have a property in Sagatuck, but you're not a primary, then you have a red and everybody else, uh, we give a green. And I think so far, I'm just kind of tallying them up. We've had about sixteen, only about sixteen people who have actually taken the time to vote. It's kind of hard to tell because they they're not required to check off on every one. So like what I'm going through, we have ten visuals from the survey that you actually have on one of the boards. And it looks like, you know, it's more like it's basically the board. And then they check off if they prefer that or if they if they do not prefer. Um, you know, so some of them have like nine or ten prefers, other ones, you know, have seven. But if I'm kind of going by the just the numbers, what it looks like, you probably have between fifteen and twenty, uh, total, you know, that have come by. I don't know. Did you have more?
Yeah, I bet I had fifteen yesterday at the post office.
Because.
Not everybody, you know, picks more than one.
Because that's what ends up happening is because like when the one board, we asked them to give us their top three preferences of what they think is most important. And so then when they get ready to do the visual, they think they only have three, you know, options unless you kind of tell them. So so we've had a greater number, but the, just but like what you had said, though, as far as on the visual, the ones that are the one and two-story kind of more traditional look that we what we kind of already have, the pitch roofs have more of the preferreds. The three stories are about the only ones that have more, they're definitely saying do not preferred. You know, a lot of the other ones, they just kind of leave it blank. Um, the ones that have a second story, it's kind of a mixed, you know, depending upon what the style was. And I think a lot of it has to do with the bulk. You know, and so, I mean, from my conversations with individuals, it was, if you're going to have buildings like that, then they can't take up the entire lot. Because I had several people who told me like on a couple of the visuals, we have a two-story building, but it's on the visual, it looks like it goes from the sidewalk all the way to the next building. And so they were against the idea that that you would have that much bulk. They weren't against so much the, uh, the height of the building. So you're kind of getting that sense that the green space and access to the water, they use, those are showing up as the number one and two on the preferences of what we should prioritize and then the, uh, height. But that's kind of what what I've seen, you know, on the board so far. And then we'll have the boards out, um, tomorrow at the market. I don't know if we have anybody's doing OXPO or not tomorrow night. Then we're, yeah, we're approved for that at one point.
Yeah, I've not got out there, Chairman Mann. So I'd love to get a slot to get out there to hear people. This is exciting. I think this is super cool.
OXPO approved us to be able to have our table at their tomorrow night's event, uh, starts at six or six thirty. I couldn't do it.
And and actually, I have a conflict now. I'm supposed to do the S P A between eleven and one tomorrow.
DJ's gonna.
I I was sneaking on that one just after you already signed up, so I've already taken that one.
Taking off. Taking it off. Oh, there you go. Yeah.
And it is, it's, um, it's interesting. It's like to tell you just.
It's fun.
Even though, like, when you're out in front of town hall, it's a lot more tourist, it seemed like. Um, so you're having conversations, but it's interesting because you get to ask them how long they've been coming to town, what draws them to town. Um, I found it, you know, very, you know, the two times, I mean, it's. Um, I found it, you know, very, you know, the two times, I mean, it's, I don't want to do it every day for two hours, but but it is interesting just to kind of hear.
No, I forgot sunscreen.
Yes, yes. But sorry about that, David, yes, but it is kind of moving forward, and it's very much in line with what you were just saying, and what I'm anticipating we're going to see in the survey. I think the survey numbers that you just went through of having a hundred and seventy-nine and two hundred and eight thus far is very impressive, you know, turnout for the numbers up percent.
I also had several people say they really appreciated that we were doing it, so.
Right, and the QR code, by the way, is also on each of the boards, and I know I had five or six people who actually pulled the survey up right off the QR code while, while they were standing there. So I thought that was a really good idea, I remember when CJ brought the whole QR code up, and now it seems to be they're everywhere. Everywhere. So if you'd like to continue with your assessment, that'd be great.
Sure, sure, yes, and I think, um, the boards are just a good opportunity to give people kind of a, a taste of what the surveys involve as well, and just to get people talking and aware of this project, so I think it's just being out there in the community, having the conversations, getting people, uh, interested and exciting to provide that input, uh, I think it's just a good thing. You know, I, you know, I think we all know we're not going to get like a, you know, quantitative analysis, uh, from the boards, but I think it's just good to have people go through the exercise and begin to, which are going to affect waterfront development in the community, so I appreciate everyone who's put their time into, to sitting out there and, and soliciting the input. Um, so then the, the report itself, so again, this is really the, the, the first half of the assessment, and really this is the uh, kind of the basis that, that we'll be using to, to create the recommendations, uh, for the waterfront zoning districts. Uh, the character assessment, again, a lot of you are very familiar with the character of your community, uh, but this walking through the, each corridor parcel by parcel was, was very important for me to really understand, uh, you know, the, the types of, of, of common, uh, architectural traits that, that we can find, um, you know, I, I obviously so this is, there's a very, uh, architectural features, a lot of different building types, uh, but we are able to, to identify some trends and, uh, the, the types of buildings that we see within the area. Um, the, the overall development redevelopment assessment, um, I found that very interesting just to work through that parcel by parcel. Uh, and again, I, I did not really look at the, the, the smaller boat lots or the, the parking area for the, the houseboats and things like that, but more the, uh, the more significant sized parcels, uh, pretty much everything on the east side, and then uh, three major parcels on the west side, uh, being, uh, uh, the Marina, Casaloma, and the two multifamily buildings. Uh, but on, on the east side, uh, had about six point three total acres of, of parcels that we looked at. And about, I, I would say one point eight five acres, um, five parcels of fifteen, uh, I, I thought would have a, a higher potential for redevelopments. And, and, and this, you know, this is really looking at the, the size of the parcel, uh, the ownership. Um, really, sometimes it'd be the age of the structure, obviously, things that have, have been, uh, if there's been a lot of investment in buildings in the last few years, or if, if buildings are, you know, you know, less than twenty-five years old, twenty years old, you know, I, I wouldn't count them as a great, uh, redevelopment potential. Uh, but those that are, you know, built in the, the early nineteen hundreds to, to the fifties and sixties, I think, you know, a lot of those buildings are beginning to age a bit, in the potential for someone to, to buy with the intention to, to redevelop. Um, obviously, some sites, uh, like the, um, the, uh, Singapore, uh, Yacht Club, um, parking lot, I mean, anytime you have a, a surface parking lot with a great location like that, uh, it is going to be a, a high likelihood of redevelopment. Um, so, uh, overall, uh, you know, just under two acres, I think, on the east side, that would really have more, a, a higher potential uh, for redevelopment proposals. Uh, then on the west side, um, there's a one point two-three acres of, of, a parcel studied. Um, really, the one I thought would be the, the Casaloma Marina, and, and the, the structures there, um, they're, they're older buildings, um, there's a lot of land there, point six-five acres. And, uh, I would really see that as, as a potential, uh, for redevelopment proposal at some point. Uh, so overall, um, about two point five acres of the study area, which is about one and a third, uh, you know, I would expect to have a higher likelihood for redevelopments, uh, than the remaining two-thirds. And obviously, a lot can happen with any building, but, um, I, I want to have a, a good, I want to have a grasp about coming in the upcoming years, and then, um, in the next report, we're really going to get into a bit uh, deeper on, on what could happen on those parcels, uh, based on the, the, the current zoning regulations. So, uh, after the development assessment, um, I, I did look through the master plan, in, in, obviously, it's, it's a, it's a three-community plan, and the, the, the goals and policies are, are definitely a bit more general in nature, um, there's, there's no specific guidance on building scale form and design like you might have in like an, an area-specific plan or a downtown-specific plan. Uh, but I, I think there's a lot of great guidance in those general goals and principles, um, that's a, we can hang our hat on when, when we're looking at, uh, zoning regulations. So, you know, those were to really ensure sensitive development, uh, which preserves views and access to the waterfront, uh, reasonable limitations on development, uh, preservation of historic buildings, and to, to really consider the compatibility of future development and land use, uh, with existing land use of buildings. So I think there's a, a lot of, uh, good guidance, uh, within the, the master plan, um, even, even though there's not, you know, specific design guidance, you know, concerning buildings, um, I think there's a lot that we can, you know, base our recommendations on. And then, uh, lastly, um, I know it was requested from the planning commission, uh, that we, we put together a, a comparison, um, of the dimensional requirements as well as the land use regulations between, uh, the, the three subject zoning districts. Um, now, originally, we had, um, a, a fourth zoning district, but, um, I conferred with, with, um, with Ryan, that's uh, the Water Street South actually wa- was expanded northward, and so there's that, that middle, um, Ryan, you have to correct me if I, on the term, but I think it was a a Water Street Central or Water Street, uh, I think it was a C-two central one that, that was rezoned, so, so we're just dealing with the three zoning districts.
Yeah, it was just Water Street commercials, what it was called, but so it included like Wicks Park and, and, uh, uh, some properties to the north, but yeah, there was some rezoning that was done several years ago to include them in Water Street, so.
Yep. Okay, and then with the, the land use regulation, uh, general comments on, on the land use regulation, uh, some of the line items, um, you know, obviously, this is an older code, you know, at some point, you're, you're likely going to, 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 uh, do an overhaul on, on the full code. And so, you know, I don't think we need to get too deep into, you know, updating all, all the land use, you know, modernizing the terminology and in, in doing a full zoning ordinance update, but, uh, there, there might be some opportunity to, uh, to, to modernize some of the uses and to, um, you know, assess the, the land uses, uh, between districts. Um, if there is a re reason to, to make, um, you know, with it between Water Street North and Water Street South, you know, those, those are, are similar, um, you know, similar character, um, I think Water Street North is intended to be a bit more denser, and, uh, you know, with, with, uh, smaller lot sizes, uh, no side rear setbacks. Where Water Street, Street South, um, the lot sizes are a bit, a little bit larger, and there are, um, side setbacks, um. So that's a little bit different between the, the two, and then obviously, C-four Resort is, is a, is a completely different context. Um, it's, 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 it's a quieter residential area, um, and, uh, you, the requirements are certainly a little bit different based on that. So, um, again, I, I don't have anything, uh, as for recommendations this meeting, I just wanted to report, you know, how, how we're beginning to, to make the basis for the zoning recommendations next month. Um, so, next month, we'll have survey results, uh, be able to discuss them the best practices, our own, and make, uh, recommendations on zoning. Um, some of the questions I had on the last page of the report, um, were the, you know, just general questions the planning commission may want to consider tonight, you know, what are the, the characteristics of the study area, um, and the most important elements, uh, to consider, uh, to encourage or require? Uh, you know, the implications of, of the redevelopments of higher potential properties, so I was just wondering what your reactions would be, or were, on, on the, uh, redevelopment assessment. Um, consideration of the dimensional requirements between the districts, uh, land use regulation between districts, and then, again, like, number five, we, we did address it already, uh, just the, the general public input from the local events.
Thank you, David, I do have one question before we open it up to the commissioners. On the page ten of your report, which is twenty-nine in our kit, can you tell me, and maybe I just missed it, what does the S and the P stand for when you're looking at land use, so like the first one accessory, home business? Water Street is got an S, the other two have dashes, what, can you explain what that is?
Sure, sure, I apologize, I should have put a, a key to the, the symbols there, uh, but, uh, uh, P is permitted land use, so permitted by right. Uh, S is a special land use, and then the two dashes, uh, means that it's, it's not permitted within those districts. So, uh, permitted use, special land use, and a prohibited land use.
Okay. Very good. And it was that part of it, thank you.
You took my question.
I was guessing, I kept thinking, I maybe I missed something. It makes sense, um.
Yeah, thanks, Chairman Manns, uh, David, thank you, this is, we're exactly on the right track on this, I, I'm very pleased by the work that's been done by David and by Ryan and city staff, and this reports, this report is exactly where I thought we would be at this point, so this is really good information for the commission to be able to work with to achieve the goal here, and that's to evaluate waterfront usage for these districts, um, I just think we're on a good track, and I don't see anything here that, uh, other than continuing to collect information that, um, I look forward to the next step in the discussion, I'll be updating council at Monday night's meeting, um, and then also encouraging them to participate if they haven't already in the survey. Um, good work, thank you.
Regarding the questions at the end, I guess, I'd like just kind of get a few people's feedback on, you know, like the, just going to start with the dimensional requirements and the appropriateness between the districts. You know, it's something I know I raised, uh, previously, was that the Water Street North, again, they are smaller lots, and when, when we rezoned, many of them had a hundred percent coverage, so then they made the zoning laws to say you could have a hundred percent coverage, you know, uh, on, on those parcels, but then if you look at the Water Street South, you know, your lot coverage is forty-five percent, which again, that gives, makes kind of sense, because that's the way we'll kind of protect the access to the waters, if they can't, you know, build on more than forty-five, uh, percent, and then on the east or the west, it's fifty percent. Um, you know, are we comfortable that if we had a new project in Water Street North that was being proposed to give them up to a hundred percent lot coverage? You know, those are the type of questions that I think if we're looking at zoning, we need to be thinking about, yes, that's what's allowed now. If we changed it, we would have all non-compliant buildings, you know, many of them in the north currently, but if they ever came back up in front of us, you would have something to be able to say, so I think that would have to be something that we would at least want to consider, you know, on, on that question is, that lot coverage between the south and the north.
Good point. Really good point. A quick question, David, do we, do we know the date that these, that these districts were last reviewed and, and updated? Do you know offhand?
I, 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 I don't know, um, we could look into that, Ryan, I'm not sure if, if you're aware, um, I know there's only, it might have some dates of, of revisions within each section, but I, I'd have to confirm that.
That was two thousand fourteen.
Was it?
I'm not mistaken.
The reason I ask is because, uh, as I was reading through this, it's, it's very much in keeping with, um, you know, kind of the legacy of these districts from a, from a history standpoint is, you know, the northern district, when I was a kid growing up, literally a block and a half from there, everything north of Spear Street, really actually north of, um, Francis Street was all commercial, you had charter fishing, you had commercial fishing, you had a government dock with a research boat. You had, uh, the Queen of Sagatuck back then, now the Star of Sagatuck. Very much a commercial kind of, I mean, it was very much, I don't want to call it industrial, but it's pretty close to it, you had a twisting works factory on the corner of Spear and water, I mean, it was very much a, you know, we go down there to play because of all kinds of cool stuff. You got anywhere north of Francis Street, Ship and Shore, and those areas, you know, there was, Wicks Park was a miniature golf course, that's actually where the Island Queen originally was.
Right.
So that's where this recreation, the amusement arcade is, so this is, some of it's a legacy from history. Now, the interesting thing is that my challenge as a commissioner is to think, okay, can't, can't preserve history, but what do we want this to look like going forward, and I think generally speaking, the things I hear from people is waterfront views, and, and we're hearing it in the comments, waterfront views, being able to access the waterfront easily, including street ends. And so that's kind of where I'm going on this is, is, I have memories of the past, but really, where do we want this to be in thirty-five, forty years?
Well, the other thing that I'd noticed between the north and the south is because you can build a hundred percent, you don't have any setbacks, so there is, you know, and David, you did also brought out that once you get past Wicks Park, you really don't have a sidewalk any longer, because they have a, they can build up to a hundred percent, so again, we can't change that now, but like those two parcels that were potentially going to be in front of us, I realize they're small, and if you do require setbacks, it's going to be even smaller for somebody to be able to make it viable, but I think, you know, we have to at least discuss, would it be nice to be able to have a sidewalk eventually all the way up to the end of Water Street? And the same thing would apply with the waterfront, you know, if you can't, if you can't do a setback, do you have to allow public access by building a boardwalk or something like we tried to do down here when Butler was being put in?
And I would remind everybody, the city spent seventy-three thousand dollars to build a sidewalk literally between, a little bit north of Spear and Willow Park at, at the end, so there's already been an investment in sidewalks there. And there's already, so, the, the, the trend's there to make that a walkable space for people, so.
Right.
It's a matter of safety, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And I've already, yeah, I've already.
And of course, we know that there's the issue of sidewalks over on the, the west with parks, but that's the challenge of how we'd make that one work, but again, if they both fall into that public safety, and do you have a sidewalk, or, but I guess that's one of the things that as we're looking at this, you know, do we want to keep them in separate zones, or even if they are in separate zones, because they are, do have a different feel?
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, it's, would we want to consider, you know, those type of changes, and so I think that that definitely should be a discussion that we would have, you know, David, as we go into next month. Um, the land use regulation in comparison between districts, there's not a big difference, but there are some, and he did highlight it in here, if everybody can, you know, begin to take time tonight, or between now and the next meeting. But if you kind of go through and you look what is allowed, as the north versus the south,
Mm-hmm.
you'd have to sometimes ask that question of, well, why is it not permitted in both, or, you know, why isn't it?
Right.
So, um, you know, those are the type of things that if we're going to look at the ordinance, and I do think that we would want to, you know, um, kind of take that line by line as to what's, what, what each of them are.
In the parking lot at Wicks Park, that used to be a house, this is a laundromat for many years, and then it was a candle shop, which resulted in it burning down. But, so anyway, going back as to some uses there, it was a commercial building that had a number of uses over the years, so it's just very interesting to see, I think some of this speaks to that legacy that when they originally wrote this, that was probably in mind, I'm sure.
Right. And I think the, you know, you've done a nice job on your second question of the implications of the redevelopment.
Mm-hmm.
You're very much in line with probably most of us who have lived here, when we look at Water Street, we'd probably say, yeah, there's good one-third of it, probably has a fairly high potential of being redeveloped. And high to medium is probably fifty percent of the street, so the importance of looking at this and trying to think ahead, um, I, I find it's worth, worth our time.
Well, I'm a hundred percent agreeing with that, I mean, um, considering everything, uh, if you have the up to do something like this in terms of the way community values are changing
Mm-hmm.
and the value that people place on open spaces or waterfront use or access to the water. I think that, um, it's really the commission's obligation to you from time to time. In this kind of.
Yes, and I think our master plan kind of lays it out, but it's so general that you really do have to kind of take a look at what's in our ordinance, just thinking that if somebody came in for that Singapore parking lot and proposed a development, and it met all the requirements that are in our current ordinance, you know, you'd have to say approval for it. You know, the two buildings in the north, you know, just didn't get approved because they didn't get the variance for any of the setbacks, you know, that were there before it even came to us, but because I definitely, you know, I think most of us have like thoughts as to, like with what we're seeing in the survey, that we don't want to see it be a row of, you know, buildings all the way down, even if you had a boardwalk everywhere, you still want to be able to see that from the street.
And even, and even like the sidewalk issue that we just discussed, when I'm driving down that street, um, um, and really peak and even not so peak times, people trying to navigate walk along there.
Correct.
I mean.
Water Street.
Sorry. Yes, Water Street. People walking along there once the sidewalk ends. I mean, it's just like grown those at moments, it's like they're about this far from the car.
Oh, yeah, you reached the end of the.
And then you kind of cut it all through, ship and shores, parking and.
Fusion rains when you reach the end of Wicks Park and heading north, you're like, and you see it all the time.
Across the street, but, and I think that, you know, again, it would take time if there was ordinance changes, you know, because obviously it would take time for those buildings to turn over. That would allow for it, but.
Into there. It sounds like that's the solution.
The question on the characteristics from the study area, I think we are hearing that very clear, you know, so far from the public is that they would like to see it maintained in a similar type of style that kind of stays with, you know, the history. It'd be interesting to see what would come before, you know, us or, you know, just in the future, you know, for development. There are cities like, you know, Petoskey, Charlemagne, even Holland that have incorporated, I think, very well, some modern with their old. You know, so it doesn't mean that it couldn't be, but definitely people are preferring that it kind of keep that, that characteristic. And I think that we can kind of keep that in mind. There's only certain things you can put in an ordinance, of course, as far as, you know, getting down to, you know, styles and that, but and so the redevelopment. Is there anything, David, that we, you would like us to cover in those questions besides going back before, maybe before the next meeting? If everybody can look at each of the land uses and kind of make, be ready to kind of discuss whether or not you think that they should be permitted or special create a special unit or, you know, not permitted. I think that would be beneficial for us.
Yeah, I, I think it would be great if, if anyone, well, like similar to the survey input that you provided, several planning commission members marked up the, the drafts and it just put comments and suggestions. So, I mean, I, I would, I would really welcome all the planning commission members to just read the report over again and add comments, just anything that you feel that I missed or anything you'd like me to, or anything you'd like to supplement. Just so that I'm aware of more of the, you know, the local knowledge or the, you know, the legacy type information that was addressed before was just great. So anything else you think I should know, feel free to mark it up or send an email. Just so I can, you know, supplement my own knowledge about the study area to be able to make the recommendations.
Home businesses, what is that? What do we mean by home businesses? I mean, is it like me working out of my home office or?
I would think if you were running like a retail type of a business.
Okay, so it's a, it's a commercial business run out of a home?
So.
Out, out of your residence?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we have, it's an interesting theory. We never thought of designing a business, what would happen. So home based business is much more like an official.
Okay.
Maybe we want to buy a client, you might look at more than one outside, not a handy member as an employee, like it's very diverted.
Okay.
Most of the time retailers that you're not going to permit that in a home based business, you're operating some of that private service.
Great, thank you.
Let me ask the fellow commissioners here, would you prefer, for David's sake, since he's going to be trying to come up with some recommendations for regulations by the next meeting, would you prefer that we go through each of the items and make, you know, comments here this evening, or everybody take the time and send their comments over, meaning, meaning like we look at the home business, you know, does it make sense that we only have, is it a special land use? Why is it a special land use in one district and not even allowed the other two? You know, we can do that line by line now, or we can have everyone commit to kind of sending their comments in. You know, there's, there's definitely ones in here where, you know, the question is, you know, again, like I love that, just picking one, the charter fishing and tours, you know, it's permitted in the north primarily because it was there already in the north. There's really, that's the only reason why you'd say it's permitted and it's not permitted in the other two, you know, so it's.
That's probably, again, a legacy issue.
It was a legacy, yes.
Because north of essentially Mary Street, it's all marinas. And so they did not want to have charter fishermen within the marina itself because of the.
That was a bad one to pick, but definitely, because I can understand why that was.
That would explain that, but from, from my experience.
If we jump down like in parks, you know, to say that it's permitted in Water Street South, but they're not permitted, I mean, they're not permitted in north because you don't have any open land and they all had a hundred percent coverage. But again, why would we say that you couldn't have a park if somebody wanted to tear a building down and donate it to the city? You know, so I think that, you know, each one of these, we should be able to kind of go through and give some direction as to, you know, if we'd be open to, you know, that being revised again as part of the recommendations for any ordinance changes.
My personal thought would be to send feedback in individually as opposed to going through them at the meeting.
Okay.
And just one, I, I like that idea too, but just one question, is this kind of the universe we should be thinking about as another? In other words, are there other activities or is that we would want to think about as well?
You could add these. These are the ones that are in the current, as to what we specify are allowed uses and what would be a special land use. And so it's, but if there's other uses that you would think that we should be considering, at least listing, that could be added in also. But I think, you know, if everybody's kind of went through and made the comments, you know, is, do you think there's a rationale for why it's not allowed in one? And should it, you know, should it be a lot or changed? And I think, you know, David, again, you've already kind of highlighted a number of these, you know, as to should they even be in there, like on the amusement parks, you know?
Or motion picture. That's my favorite.
You know, and so it's, so there's definitely some, you know, so I, I kind of read through his, and I thought many of those, you know, already kind of are the question that we need to be answering. You know, as, as the commissioners to kind of give him some of the guidance. But then, you know, even looking at a few of the others and trying to determine, should there be a restriction or should we have a change?
Right.
So if you just kind of went through and if everybody sent back, is this something, I know it's in our packet. Is this, could these two pages be sent to where we could actually make the comments online and send them back to you?
Yeah, I think we could.
Like a editable PDF or something?
Yeah, I'm sure. I won't speak for David. Yeah, he could, he could do that, yeah.
Because that'd make it a lot easier if we just had this and we were able to just kind of type in.
Yeah, maybe we just create another column as planning commissioner comments, and then each of you could, yeah, add those comments. And Dave, when would, if they were to send their feedback to me and then I could compile them, you know, or probably actually send them as they come in to be easier? I don't know. What do you prefer? When would you like these by, if they're going to have homework assignment? Because I know you'll need time to review them and consider them to prepare your next report.
Uh, yes, um, let me see. I I, I would think maybe by the August fourth. Um, August third, actually just on the calendar, maybe, maybe two weeks from today, that'd be August third. Yep. That would give me, because the next meeting will be August seventeen, and that would give you at least a week to consider all the comments.
That'd be great. You know, I think if we just had this type of the form with that extra column, where we have our ability to put in your, your thoughts.
Is there any discussion regarding combining the two districts, Water Street South and North into one district?
I like the idea, but I think one of the things that I did discuss, I don't know, with Ryan and then Chris, if you were involved, is it would make virtually every property that's in Water Street North non-compliant if we had change to be more like Water Street South, but it definitely, if we're talking about in the future.
Maybe that's been the general sense is to try to condense the districts. It's an opportunity to do it.
It's not like it's. Correct. Maybe we are going to run into dramatic implications, at least as it relates to work that they would be doing inside the structured remaining use they have. The big problem that happens with the non-conforming status. You're pretty soft in actually not performing breakdown if it relates to not performing land uses, right? So when you're looking at these land use regulations, that that used to improve in that district that you were looking from that chart as a non-performing land use. So if you go look at, it's in the administration enforcement section on that, that you're zoning ordinance. Those regulations are going to control, that's almost probably maybe more restraining than dealing with the non-conformal structure provisions. So if you eliminate a land use, we're sort of a pretty strict ordinance about allowing expansion, alteration, and different pieces. On a non-performing structure, that's where you're going to get into lot coverage, you definitely got setbacks. Then you've got a different set of positions that are going to apply. So if you're not going to shut those businesses down, they're going to comply with your ordinance. They're just going to have notifications that what exists over the next couple that they're trying to make the expansion or alteration, you know. General rules, you're not going to allow them to basically expand that use. You sort of want that use to go away and want that structure to be formed with your regulations.
Correct. And there, of course, there is implications that if you did, made it all like one, and you had the more restrictive like the south where you said you got fifty percent coverage, you know, if we went to that, you changed the value of those properties, you know, potentially fairly dramatically in the north. Because if somebody was to tear down a building, you can now only build on fifty percent of the lot, that lot just went down in value greatly. So it's, that really would have to be something strongly considered. We'll probably get, if we were making that recommendation, probably going to get a lot of pushback, but but I still think that, you know, it needs to be discussed and we need to consider. Especially if nothing else, you know, setbacks that would allow in the future, even if it was a section of sidewalk at a time, you know, but eventually you would have a complete sidewalk, just like you could have had, you know, complete boardwalk.
I'm comfortable with giving some feedback over time on those usage. But I'm, I want to discuss the characteristics of the study area and the most important elements to encourage or require. I know what I like, but doesn't the historic district sort of cover this, that and that, that there's going to be specific things? How would we create an ordinance to force or to push a preferred style of building that we recommend? I find that maybe interesting where historic society or district commission handles that.
I don't think we're getting.
So you might have to, I, I don't want to still base under, you might have to speak to that, but there, there are some, some tools that zoning has that gives you a little bit of the form and the form and the basis of how buildings are constructed, depending on what regulations you're looking at. And you're going to do a overlay, you can look at some of those tools, you can create a use, you can use the program, you can design. There's, after they've got the tools, you can probably discuss with you that allow you to give it into some of the form base, the static piece of the building as well as the, the, the use that, so be proud of that some options. That would be great.
Uh, my, my, my goal is to have less regulations and make it simpler for everybody, but that's, and maybe the historic district sort of helps that, or maybe there's something else we should do.
I mean, I think we have the ability, you can change, you know, like height, if we were determining that twenty-eight feet, if you were set, okay, there could be two and a half or three stories.
Mentions are one thing, characteristics is.
Right.
You know, that's very challenging. Yeah, that's a little more objective.
I don't see that in, I don't see a lot of ordinances in other cities where they get into the real characteristics of the materials with the pitch rough or, but a lot of times then you're historic.
If you didn't use best control in your downtown development, you will find, you will find what's made that now, if they figured out a method, you de-process a land use development, like a similar calculation where you literally create sort of design guides and standard and you would want for a specific district. They have to allow a central business district to break down town because, you know, the same idea would apply here, but it's different setting, you know, right? And people go to a downtown, they want a stability, probably with just a big sidewalk, they want that sort of wall to fall. It is that downtown, they want someone coming in, building, building that has ten, but the setback, all of a sudden it's got a setback on the road, it just sort of loses their deal. So they do that for you, you guys, and it's other downtown master planning, that can be done through planner. It's sort of set up some of that, so then the project, then you're reviewing, the use might be permitted by right, but of course you're always going to end up with a site plan. So if you're going through that site plan review, it's going to allow the planner to be able to look at the project and do a little bit more, and maybe recommendations on long backer pieces. Now, we've gotten in a dispute before about whether you could put polished concrete block or it's got to be one inch thick marble, and that gets a little tense, right? And I think we are supposed to be filming, and so there are ways to get there, but, you know, to your point, if you're going to have regulations, they're probably not, as you're going to get, it's going to require a whole different piece of the plan.
I do think that the zone, I mean, the master plan, I think, is a great and living document, and I think the more we can honor, and the points I think Dave included in this seem like good guidance for us as we consider all of this. Agree.
All right, so everybody by August third will complete. And again, I know Sarah's sitting there going, one more thing, I've got to.
I do have one more comment.
Sure.
I do want to thank Ryan. There was an email exchange that I was involved with from a resident who was taking the survey and had some questions about some of the aspects of the survey and had some good feedback, and I just really appreciate Ryan responding quickly and thoughtfully to that resident. So thank you. It's appreciated.
Fantastic.
I, I have a quick question.
Absolutely.
To the city attorney. When we were talking about non-conforming, I'm looking at the provision in the zoning ordinance, and I, I thought you said there was a less restrictive or a, a separate non-conforming provision somewhere else?
So it is one, it's one fifty-four, one seventy-four?
That's what I'm looking at.
So you're going to end up, you have a breakdown between non-performing uses and then non-performing structures.
Okay, but this provision covers uses lots and structures, correct?
Correct, yeah, but there's sub standards within that that are getting treated each one of those situations.
Okay, I, I, I thought I heard you say there was a completely separate vision somewhere else that was less restrictive. And I just misheard you. Okay. Yep, I just started looking through it.
That's, there you go.
It's, it's long.
A lot of time there, actually.
Long enough.
A lot of time in that, that particular part of the ordinance.
You've got ten minutes.
Non-conforming? I just think they're all grandfathered in, so, you know.
Well, they are, but it's.
Well, they are to the, to the point where they want to make a change and then.
Correct.
But that's, but then they're subject to those provisions.
That, that regulation doesn't even cover the places.
Right, I understand.
Yeah, that, that's what that tells us whether they can or can't make the change, if they want to make a change. It's a really interesting question of when they got to go to the zoning board field or whether you, that's sort of announced. Depending on if it's administratively done, are they going to go to the zoning board to get it done, or it didn't seem like it was right, or if.
Right.
How do cities put a cut in place like over at this point, since there's already buildings all along the waterfront?
Yes, it would all be for future use.
So you would just, you would put it in, but it would still be almost like changing the ordinance. Nothing would happen initially. Another one of these ones where you can understand why prior commission said, let's just let somebody else do it.
It's like, take it all on.
All of a sudden, you start realizing how many different options you have.
Right. You guys chose short-term rentals and waterfront the same year.
We're strong.
They both came up, but, you know, when you start thinking about the impact of some of the decisions that would go into record, and I know David's going to help with some of the, you know, recommendations, but I never even thought of the whole, you know, PUD overlay.
Yeah.
If you really wanted the planning commission to be involved with anything that would happen going forward, because you, that would require them to come before planning if it was part of the PUD, correct, Ryan? If you had an overlay?
Yes.
Yeah, generally, like cities that go that route, that sort of add the extra layer, you're, you end up with a process, you have to first create the new district. You create a district that's something your PUD, right, and then you're going to sort of be playing the preliminary PUD, final PUD process. The preliminary process is going to have the visioning piece. And so like what cities have done is they offer as their, their own process to go in and provide for that preliminary visioning section. Put it in place, one is the place that five of those properties, property owner then coming in and applying to the rest of the process. And they kind of eat that together, you know, whatever it is, like gable, one story, X amount of coverage. The, the one thing that I think would be interesting, and Dave worked on it. The one thing that I think would be interesting, and Dave works on it, is the. Maybe the waiver and the flexibility that you get out of a PUD process, that allows the developer to bring that forward and ask. For the flexibility to work out with the commission, whereas any other, whereas we don't call the waivers outside of U V developed areas, right? And then they get a hybridated process where you're taking development before the D B A and the plan.
Correct. Interesting. Good. Other comments regarding the. Waterfront development?
No, I mean, my only other comment is that this is really helpful. Um, having David here and Chris here.
Yes.
Uh, to really um. Keep us off the surface and make us go deeper. In terms of what uh the implications are of any of these decisions. Um, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, I think it's even when they bring up new topics, it's, you know, something that maybe, you know, we don't deal with every day in our lives. And but you need to understand, one, that it's available, but then, two, how would it be done? Does it make sense? Because it could be somebody else sitting in these chairs, you know, ten years from now, who has got a proposal in front of them, who are going back looking and say. Why did they put this overlay or why is this, you know?
Yeah, and what's interesting actually is one of the properties that, you know, on Water Street North that was. My last developed in this district, you know, in that case, they actually applied for a PUD themselves as an applicant. And coming in and asking for flexibility, and so I think it's interesting that they ended up using that process to try to get a, you know, a project done that maybe. Made everybody happy, right, so.
Set the multifamily one?
Yeah, yep, next, uh, yep, so.
The house and then the.
Yep, kinda has that break in between though, and so you can see through to the water still and.
Right, so, okay. No, I I do appreciate it. And David, thank you for the work that you've put in, Chris, of course, for being here, you know, with this. So with that, that's. Includes our assessment for this tonight. See, did you have someone else? Communications, I didn't see any in our pack, I don't think we had any that relate. We had some for the short-term rental, but that was separate, so we closed that one out. Your packet is the report, you know, from the zoning administrator. Um, Ryan, is there anything of note that you wanted to put draw our attention to, or does anybody have any questions on that report?
Busy month.
That I think is, yeah. Everyone. I mean, the one question I have, it looks like we have really started to address some of the complaints as well as some of the compliance issues. Cause I see how there's a number of places in here where you are. You know, addressing either like again a complaint, or you could realize that there's something like, you know, a street sign that we never got approvals for. Is that a project that you're currently working? Through, or is it, does somebody bring it up to you?
Yeah, so I mean, anytime we receive a complaint, we we do look into them, so um, and we are complaint driven primarily with our current resources. We don't have like more proactive, like regular going out and.
Right, I should have said it.
We, you know. As I'm here. And here, you know, almost see, well, a couple of months here, it'll be a year. Flew by, um, you know, I'm kinda, I know if it's a new business coming in, I I knew it was a new business and I know if they'd gotten permits or been getting permits, or if something had. Then, you know, is new, you know, because I'm walking around and seeing things, you know, so. I may not know historically if something was permitted or not permitted, and unless maybe a complaint's made and I have to look into it, so it's a combination.
Good, yeah, and I have to say, um, enforcement, cause a number of the ones are in there for the enforcement.
Yes.
And that's something you saw that was newer, and so I commend you, and I think, you know, it's, you know. Looks like we're starting to kind of go through and just trying to bring everything into. You know, regu- regulation or conformity, so that that part I thought was good. And then it looks like, you know, on the applications for like short-term rentals, as we expected. We're pretty much back to either lower than normal or what would be considered historical, we had a spike because of the decision, but.
Yeah, they've slowed down since, you know, there was, you know, discussion and putting a task force into place and, you know, the recommendation related to a moratorium that, you know, uh, you know, then go forward. Um, and even looking at like the next several months of like. Short-term rentals that are set to expire, there's maybe one or two, so I mean, some of it's cyclical as far as when the program started and. And just every three years getting like huge bumps, and I think the short-term rental task force is seeing that and their charge actually was covered in a chart today too, so.
I would also suggest to um. The short-term rental team as well as even the city, because I. I don't think I've missed a meeting, um, but uh, as you all know who were there. Um, a lot of the conversation from citizens who attend and make comments is about enforcement. And um, um, I think this would be really good news to people. Um, quite frankly, in my time on this commission, in getting these reports, I've never seen the word enforcement used so much. Honestly, so um, as far as I'm concerned, you're listening, you've taken feedback to heart. And you're stepping up, and I just think people should be made aware of that, so good job.
Thank you, appreciate it, absolutely.
And I think that would make the community feel better too.
Yeah, and I think, yeah.
It's something that we've got it in the packet, but again, I don't know how many people in the community don't go through our packet, but. Yeah, I think it's nice. Commissioners, we can always, you know, kind of, when we're having conversation, people bring it up. You can refer back to this to, you know, friends and favors that this is being done and that, you know, Ryan documents it at every council meeting.
Are talking to their constituency. Uh, at the short-term rental town hall or whatever it's calling it for Monday night, I mean.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, Tuesday night.
Yeah. You got Monday from me and I was wrong.
I better look at my calendar.
I know, never trust me on dates and days or names.
Yeah.
So, but other than that, I've got it covered.
And I do appreciate the call out because when I make my report at Monday's meeting, I can emphasize that. There's a bit more of an audience, or not a whole lot more than here, but there is some more of an audience and and I think it's good for people to hear that, so thank you very much for.
Yep.
Bringing that to our attention.
Thanks to Ryan and the staff too. Well, that will move us to our last public comment. If there is anyone who would like to address us.
Ryan, were you gonna say something?
No, just one last touch on enforcement, cause certainly, you know, your policymakers of city council, and for loud and clear from the community that. You guys want enforcement, so we're doing that, but city council, uh, just since your last meeting approved um, uh, the budget for next fiscal year and did include. Um, kind of a a line item of thirty thousand dollars for. Um, you know, code enforcement in some way, so what that's going to look like going forward, that's still kind of, has to be fleshed out and and brought to the council and 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 approved. Um, some of that, we'll have to kind of see how the short-term rental processes work out and and what needs to be done there and where do we need those enforcement dollars to go, but. There's muddies that that the council's approved at least uh to do more, so.
Thanks, fantastic, thank you.
Can I have a question on that?
Sure.
Kind of generally. Do you? Or? And I'm saying you could, you code enforcement, or the sheriff's deputies when they drive around, do they do an independent look at things? And I'll give you an easy example, there's a mattress in Box Springs that's been sitting up against a. Uh, telephone pole on Elizabeth Street for since uh for more than a week.
Okay.
Um, does anybody just drive around? Another example is there's been repeated comments on weekends about parking where parking on both sides of the street, it is permitted, but fire trucks couldn't get through. Um, do you or the deputies drive around and do periodic reviews of? Of um, building uh permitted, whether it's going conforming to the plans, those kind of things, or whether it's just the general look of the way the city's looking?
Yeah, so a few different layers there, as far as like driving around and generally generally looking for violations, no, um, I don't have the resources at at this point to to do that. I think that's something we can look at more proactive. Some hours a week, somebody doing that kind of work, if there's interest in in doing that, that's something that that we could work out. Um, the sheriff's department, um. Yes, will address issues as they become aware of it, to the extent that they're within their purview. Um, like I said, complaints are a. A big driver of like, somebody or tell me that 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 mattress is there, then turn around, work to take care of it. Um, um, but I wouldn't like be driving around and looking for something like that, and then you're you're pointing on parking. Um, uh, the city council, we just recently had a discussion with them on that, um, as far as like on on some roads, uh. Uh, on Pleasant, for example, you know, it's getting. Kind of narrow if folks are parking on both sides, so. Uh, I know the city manager got direction from the council to have our engineers, sheriff's departments, and apartment public works kind of do a a greater analysis around the city to take a look at. You know, where do we, at least from a safety perspective, need to make sure that. Emergency vehicles can get get down there uh in cases of emergency, and then um. We have some longer term discussions related to. Parking overall that that probably need to occur if the council decides to set that as a priority for next year, so kind of a few layers there.
And and the final one was with respect to building permits, do.
Yes.
Are there periodic reviews of new construction or revised construction to see it's conforming before? It's before it's completely done and somebody would have to tear off something or tear down something, are there periodic reviews done for those?
Yep, so essentially, uh, all the approved plans had, you know, had their zoning approval, and then that zoning approval sent to Michigan Township Services who handles our our building inspections. So they won't issue building permits until there's zoning approval, and then they have the approved plans from zoning, and then obviously there may be more details for a construction standpoint. So say it's a new structure addition that that's going in, um, they're actually going out and measuring and making sure that the setbacks were met and that. Um, it was, is was right off the bat being built properly, in fact, we had one um, on um, on Campbell that was a new garage that was being put in and. Uh, MTS, they didn't pass their measurement inspection based on where the uh, the stake was at. The stake was actually had been moved inadvertently and somebody was aware of it, we actually issued a stop stop work order.
Right.
Uh, on the day that they were actually gonna be pouring concrete, which was a little awkward for everybody, um, but, you know. It was off, so and so, um, so yes, there's there's checks throughout and that at the end, zoning ordinance requires, uh, and they won't issue the certificate of occupancy until I also sign off saying that it met. What was supposed, it was built the way it's supposed to be built.
Hey, I and and I I realize you're one person and I see your reports and I realize how busy you are. Uh, maybe if we get a code enforcement officer slash grant writer, uh, maybe, you know, this is a relatively small town and and to rely strictly on people. Complaining versus a periodic review of what's going on on town. Um. Might be something to look forward to.
I will say, in regard to what Mark has brought up, we both. Um. Oh, I live on Main Street, as it does, and uh, or I don't know if that's your address or not, anyway, uh, we live close by to one another.
Yeah, we're both on Main Street.
We're both on Main Street, and um. So I've lived there now for um. Well, ten years. And I, this year I have, this is the worst I have ever seen it, in terms of people. Encroaching on driveway, my driveway, for instance, uh, they've never completely blocked it, but. I mean, it is, they're in my driveway. Um, so, and and it's on both sides. And there is not a fire truck, an ambulance might be able to sneak through, it would be hard, a fire truck, no way. It is just the worst.
Well, if my house were burning, I would hope a fire truck would just smash those cars and come straight here to get to my house and hook up to a hydrant, just saying.
Yeah.
Uh, putting on my council hat, uh, this, these are great, this is great feedback, I would tell Commissioner Lachey that I know that the Department of Public Works Superintendent Scott Herbert. And his team regularly are around town and 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 if issues are reported, they are addressing them and and I know that they're. Really looking at the city from a appearance standpoint, so. Um, if there's issues that you've seen or things that you would like to see taken care of, I would certainly encourage you to contact the city and contact Scott Herbert. From a public's work standpoint, two is the parking. I would encourage you to look at the most recent packet from the city council, there's an excellent letter from a resident who most of us know. With some very practical ideas about how to address some of these short-term parking issues. Um, I will expect council to be taking action on that Monday night. Um, Commissioner Lachey, I think one month ago, you had brought this issue up, and I took it back to council and um. We've been proactive on this at this point, but there's some long-term issues that need to be resolved, but short-term, I expect council to be taking some action to address these safety issues. So worse I've seen it too.
Yeah.
Right. I will open public comment, but we have no one in the room and no one online, so I think we can also close public comment. And then any commissioner comments other than what we've had so far? Any item? Uh, colleagues?
I I would just add that uh, for Fourth of July, I was over at the yacht club, uh, watching the fireworks and um. Something that was brought up by a number of people is if you have not seen it at night. The Butler. Lights are just intense, um, and I know that as part of our original approval of that, I don't even know lighting was discussed, but it it stands out like. I mean, it's it's bright to the extent that it was actually obliterating some of the fireworks and some of the laser show. So that's, and that's all had a citizen complain about their lights in the in the in the parking lot, they have some high, very high LED lights. Which are literally flooding into the buildings across the street.
Street.
Um, so I think just, there's probably not much to be done other than maybe to ask if they can tone things down a bit at the at at the deck. But I think just thinking as a commission going forward, lighting on our waterfront.
Right, mm-hmm.
It's raining everywhere, absolutely.
Um, it was interesting on the waterfront survey, and I had several people um.
Shared their unhappy thoughts about the Butler. Expansion, so they were, and that was, they were thrilled that we were taking a look, so.
Right. I found it interesting earlier, speaking of of when you were talking about a band at the back of what used to be Fish Camp, um. Uh, I hear the Butler Band up on the hill at my house virtually every night, so.
Oh, no question, be on the west side of here.
I hear, I think that's what I hear.
So the upside is, and this would apply to if they put a band behind whatever they're gonna call it, is that it has to stop at eleven, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, you, I I I, my partner and I, we say, well, we're in town and that's part of it. Um, but um, to say that, you know, it's peaceful and quiet at night is is absurd, there it's it's. There, there's a lot of of noise that goes on, I I hear music in the park. Um, up in our house, so, um, you know, I mean, it's it's part and parcel of being in a resort town, but.
Right.
Um, I I'm so glad that it it stops at eleven. So.
Anything, and.
Nothing, nothing to add, good.
Well. Then would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
You're adjourned. Anybody ever opposed a motion to adjourn?
No, no, I I can see, well, so.